We'll start our meeting tonight. Would you please stand and join me, the Federal Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go with the consent agenda. Does anybody have any changes with the consent agenda for tonight? Please, using forward, I've seen most of you here that are going to call up further. We're going to have some public hearings. And those of you here for a special issue, I'll call you up after that. And we have our regular meetings, sir. Approve for the regular agenda.
Make a motion.
I gotta add one more thing. Item 9H is the application for a liquor license for the American.
Okay, I have that added then, okay?
Make a motion with that added.
Okay. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, if most carries, how about the consent agenda? So move this. Second. Okay. Item 3, if anybody had a chance to look at the minutes, we're looking for your approval as presented.
We should probably vote on the previous motion.
Okay, on the consent agenda, if not, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, okay. Under the minutes, now we got a motion to accept that. Is there a second?
Second then.
Second then. Any questions? If not, all in favor.
We have that motion.
Okay, we have that. Okay. So let's move on to item 4, the public hearings. We're going to join the, during the regular meeting for the public hearings. The first item, we'll call on Larry Raymond.
This is a request from Robert Keel to vacate a portion of the road at Pocagama Beach. It's on Route 1266 East Shore Drive. If we do vacate that, we would retain a utility easement over that area.
Okay. Is there anybody here tonight to speak for that item 4A? Robert Keel, do you have any comments on that?
Item 5, really important to say that if we missed it last night, I guess, I think we're in the understanding.
Okay. I'm going to call on Matt O'Keefe.
Item 4A is consideration to a resolution to vacate a portion of dedicated public road at Lake Boulevard and Platte Pocagama Beach in the area of 266, 1266, excuse me, East Shore Drive. We discussed it at Planning Commission as well as CDC last night, and I so move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. That motion is carried then. Next item was item B, public hearing, consider proposal assessment for Terry Street and Andrew Subdivision Street, utility improvements. I'm going to call on John Pratt to give you an update on that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kerry, do you have that?
Yep.
Hopefully, pretty brief presentation regarding the special assessments for the Dandrew subdivision, which also included the, some improvements to Becker County Food Pantry. But the assessment hearing tonight is directly related to the special assessments that are being proposed for the Dandrew subdivision. So again, this is a requirement of State Statute 429, over the improvements, the costs, and what the resulting special assessments were. Just a little bit in the background, this project started really with the Becker County Food Pantry constructing on Terry Street, sewer and water services. Sort of at the same time, just slightly behind that, developer Dan Holesgrove initiated some development on a small tract, a property on the south side of Terry Street. These two sort of got jointed together because there are some common benefits to the improvements. So what we ended up doing, we ended up extending sanitary sewer from the north end of Broadway Avenue where it existed, down the south side of Terry Street, so we'd be able to serve the subdivision as well, extended, extending its service lateral over to the food pantry. The subdivision was pretty standard, just PVC mains, manholes, service laterals. There was already an existing water main on the south side of Terry Street. So for that improvement, the food pantry simply extended the service lateral and then ran six hundred PVC mains, hydrants, valves, and service laterals within the Dandrew subdivision, which was nine lots that were being developed. Did do some storm sewer work within the subdivision, both collection and treatment. The food pantry did their own thing, some private basin on their site. And then streets were built to typical subdivision standards, so about 36-foot wide urban section, road, curb and gutter. Resulting project costs were about $560,000 in total. Again, that includes both the cost of the improvements for the food pantry as well as the Dandrew subdivision. Ultimately, the project was funded by the city, by the fact of Becker County Food Pantry, and then special assessments that we're talking about tonight, which were all generally allocated out in accordance with the special assessment policy and the various development agreements with the food pantry as well as Dan Holesgrove. The way that shook out, it got a little bit unique in this regard. The city participated in extending that sanitary sewer down from Broadway to the general vicinity of the improvements. So that's maybe a bit unique. But that got the service down to that general vicinity, and it was, the assessment policy was applied as usual. So the city assumed on the sanitary sewer, assumed half that cost of getting from Broadway down towards Dandrew Lane. The food pantry assumed 25% of that cost. Dandrew subdivision assumed 25%. And 100% of the sewer within the subdivision was also assessed. Water main, there was really no participation from the food pantry or the city on that. That was 100% assessed to the Dandrew subdivision. Service laterals were assessed to the respective beneficiaries, being either the lots within the subdivision or the food pantry paid for their service laterals. Streets, again, was just a little bit unique because we had some street restoration costs associated with that sanitary sewer that we extended from Broadway. So the food pantry picked up 25% of that. Dandrew subdivision picked up 25%. Again, the city paid 50% of that. So I was sort of in line with what we did with the sanitary sewer. Those remaining street costs were assessed within the, to the lots within the subdivision. So this is a table that sort of summarizes what I just tried to explain there. In the end, the city had about $94,000 contributed towards the project. Becker County Food Pantry had about $55,000. The balance had just over $400,000 was assessed, is being assessed to the Dandrew subdivision, bringing us to that total project cost. We allocate those assessable costs to the Dandrew subdivision. In accordance with the assessment policy, in this case, it's very straightforward. Take each one of those items, provide it how many lots. In this case, there's nine. And you come up with a rating per lot, which is illustrated in this table. The resulting assessment is about $46,000 per lot, which has come down a little bit from the preliminary figures by $46,000. I was at $46,000. The developers prepaid about 25% of that, which is required by city policy, the balance that we assess. Policy allows for a couple options in terms of the terms on these. They can apply a 20-year term to the special assessments, basically starting immediately or on 2024 taxes. Or they can elect to take a five-year deferral, followed by a 15-year term, which is what the developers chose in this case, is to do the deferral followed by a 15-year term. That deferral ends either at five years or upon the development of the lot. So if the lot is built on and they request city services to be turned on, that ends the deferral and starts the term of the 15-year term of the assessment. Any questions?
Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak there? Is Dan here tonight? If you don't see him, then I'll case in. I'll move it over to Van Joseph.
So item B1 is consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment role for Terry Street and the Dandrew subdivision street and entirely improvement project. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on that? So all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Next item, I'm going to call on Sean for item C, the public hearing to consider proposed assessments for these trees here, and our project here. So you want to give a little report on that, Sean?
Vice Mayor and Council, yes. This is our yearly disease and hazardous tree that we go out, we survey every spring, have them cut down. And I did hand out a new assessment role with a change at one property, I had 1126 Finney, and then the rest of the ones that have yet to pay.
Okay, is anybody in the audience that would like to talk about the assessment? See none here on that. This is for the disease tree project. I'm going to call on Dan then for a motion on that.
Item C1 is consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment role for the disease trees control project. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
There's a motion, there's a second. Second. There's a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. The next item is item D, public hearing for consideration proposed assessment for concrete patuminous curb gutter approaches, sidewalk improvements for 2023. Once again, I'll call on Sean, our Public Works Director.
Vice Mayor and Council, again, this is the assessment role for any of the concrete patuminous curb gutter approaches and sidewalk improvements that we did throughout the city in 2023.
Okay. I know we have one lady here from MMCDC. Heather, did you want to, do you have any comments on this at all?
No, no comment.
Okay. Here, no objections from the audience. I'll call on Dan for this, I'll settle that.
All right. Item D1 is consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment role for the concrete patuminous curb gutter approaches and sidewalk improvements for the year of 2023. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Final item tonight is E, public hearing for consideration proposed assessments for unpaid service charges for mowing, snow removal, and sifter for 2023. Sean, you want to give a report on that?
Vice Mayor and Council, again, this is the assessment role for some sidewalk that was not cleaned in the winter. So we removed the snow from the sidewalks and then a few mowing, a few lots that were not mowed. So we mowed them and a few diseased trees that we had to take down.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us at all? Hearing none, I'll turn over to Dan then again.
Item E1 is consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment role for the unpaid service charges for mowing and snow removal for the year of 2023. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. We'll go back to our regular meeting now and go to 5A, Matt O'Keefe.
5A, consideration to a resolution approving an amended conditional use permit and variance to allow 53.25% purpose service coverage at 950 Longview Drive. This is Lakes Area Vineyard Church. It's looking to add on the spot they have. In front of you, there is an updated resolution from last night yet. This was a unanimous approval at Planning Commission as well as CDC last night. So I would move this forward.
Second.
There's a motion, a second then. I see we have folks in the Vineyard Church here tonight. Did you want to make any comments on that then?
Thank you, but no thanks.
That's a nice project, 12-inch square foot addition, so appreciate that. So without hearing media discussion, the motion, my motion is, and second, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries then. Let's go to the next item.
Item 5B, consideration to a resolution deeding approximately 211 acres next to Detroit Lakes North Industrial Park, back to the Detroit Lakes Development Authority. I'm going to take a crack at this, Larry, and let me know where I screw up. But this was leftover land that is all swamped from the North Industrial Park project. After seven years, it is taxable, therefore, we donate it back to the city. At this time, there is a potential buyer for it, so we're donating it back to Detroit Lakes Development Authority. Anything I missed?
You hit it all.
This was discussed last night at CDC. We also discussed there's very little high ground that would potentially hurt us, and this is still staying in the public sector, so people could still use it if they so choose. So this was unanimously passed last night, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Okay, this is a motion, consideration to a resolution deeding approximately 211 acres next to Detroit Lakes Industrial Park, back to the city, Detroit Lakes Development Authority. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries. The next item.
It's all your honor.
Okay, the next item, we'll put down to Dan then. Item 6A.
6A, looks like we got Dave Arden here to kind of give a presentation on summer rec program.
Welcome, Dave.
Thank you for having me. I did hand out a little sheet, just kind of an overview, an overview on everything, on the participation for this summer. When you guys look through this Little League, Meyer League, Happy Vats, Major Leagues, T-ball, girls softball, tennis, every one of those numbers on there, I've been here for, doing it for 11 years, all those numbers are record numbers for our kids. The rec, we average well. That rec is, the kids come and go as they please, kind of by the city tennis courts. And we usually get between 15 and 60 kids a day there participating in arts and crafts, T-ball, various games and stuff like that. And then down at the bottom, it kind of gives you the men's leagues that we do in our softball tournament. It was a great summer, and not only our weather really helped, we didn't have a lot of cancellations and stuff like that. One thing I'd like to really mention too is that though we have record numbers here, we also have record numbers of volunteers. Our city is great about adults and parents and whoever do a lot of volunteering, and we can't run these programs and games and stuff like that with volunteers. And the city of DL is unbelievable with that. The other thing I would like to mention is one of the reasons that we have record numbers is that our facility is one of the best in the area. And because of that, and also, I think, because of the way our program is run, we probably had close, if not more, than 100 kids participating in outside cities. And even as far as Holly coming, we had probably 50 or 60 kids from Holly coming to DL to participate in our program. Lake Park, Frazee was another 20, 20 or 30 kids that come. And they do it just because they think our program and our facility especially is, just fits in that everything really nicely. Other than that, it really, every year, I think, when I come in here, I kind of say the same thing, but it is nice to have really good numbers, nice to have such a facility that we have. And I always mention that it's always been really good working with the city workers and the parks people. So I don't see anything changing in the next couple of years. So I'll open it to any questions about our summer program.
Well, Dave, you continue the suggestion of Detroit Lakes having a great summer rec program, and you keep that ball going. We certainly do appreciate the hope that you do with that, and especially getting all those volunteers. It's a big job doing all that. So thank you for that recap. And Dan, we also have item 6, we need to go along with this, Dan.
Sure. 6B, Kelsey, you want to give us a quick synopsis of the agreement?
Vice Mayor and Council, yes. The current summer rec agreement is expiring at the end of the year. So in your packet is a new three-year agreement with a $2,000 per year increase to the agreement. Again, this is basically an agreement with DLCC, who then runs all our summer rec programs.
So item 6B is consideration to approving the agreement with the DLCC to operate the summer rec program. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
We got a second also, okay. Motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, this is for approval, the agreement for the DLCC to operate the summer rec program for next year. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
Item 6C, turn this over to John Pratt to give us a recap of the trail study.
Certainly. Vice Mayor and Council, there was a study included in your packet that provided some information regarding the proposed trail effectively from Randolph Road up to DMRA. A little bit of history on this. The county, I think, in around 2016 had done kind of what I would call a 50,000-foot view of how to connect the Heartland Trail to specifically, in their case, to Mountain View, which is directly adjacent to DMRA. And that provided some good groundwork for this. There was interest in exploring a few more details related to what would be specifically the best route, some options, what sort of obstacles, things like that would be encountered if we did that. So we studied a couple of different alignments. Some of this involves what's, we call the Figgleson property, which we have a willing partner there to extend a trail to a portion of that. The exact alignment of the trail is probably going to depend on what happens with that property, which is a little bit unknown at this point. But in the end, the study provides a couple of options of how we can do that. I'd also point out that it's possible that we would do this in some stages, both from a length standpoint and an improvement standpoint, where we would potentially pave a portion of the, of a trail up to the Figgleson property, have a bit of a trailhead. And for the time being, it could certainly be a single-track mountain biking type trail that would extend to the corner of the DMRA property, but also leaving the door open for the future if you wanted to do some sort of a improved after a multi-use trail up to that site. So there's no immediate plans to do anything. Like most of the trail projects, they usually require some outside grant assistance for us to get those accomplished. But the study at least lays out the framework of what would be required, some rough costs, different land that would have to be acquired, permits would have to be obtained, and things of that nature. So, and I should point out, the Partnership for Health provided a $10,000 grant to the city to conduct the study. The city contributed $2,000, so. Questions?
Any questions? It's good we have the study. It's like John said, it does open doors. They want to do some grant work. We needed this trail study to be able to do that. So we've got that accomplished now. Hopefully, going forward, we'll find out a good plan for that project. Turn back to you, Dan.
So item C is consideration to accepting the trail study for the Heartland Trail spur to DMRA. Public Works discussed this, recommends approval, and I so move.
There's a motion, we have a second. Second, right back at you then. Okay, any discussion on that?
I guess one question for this. And I don't know if this is part of the study, but does this take into account in the winter season, snowmobiles?
There was some, there was some discussion on the possibility of snowmobiles. I don't think the door was open, door closed on that. It was sort of waiting to see if that, if that need sort of arises. Some of what might drive that is sources of funding that we would seek for. There is some funding that is used for trails that often precludes use of motorized vehicles on those trails. So I think as we move ahead, that's something that would have to be taken into consideration. So.
Thank you. I brought that on, Mr. O'Keefe. Oh, did you? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. So all in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
Item D is consideration to approving agreement with the Marshmallow Foundation Shelter to operate a city pound. Kelsey, what?
Vice Mayor and Council, again, the city of Detroit Lakes contracts with Marshmallow Animal Shelter for basically pound services. That existing agreement expires at the end of the year. So in the packet, there's a new two-year agreement that will start at first of the year. It does include a slight increase to the monthly rate of $2,650 for 2024 and $2,700 per month in 2025.
So item D is consideration to approving the agreement with Marshmallow Foundation Shelter to operate a city pound. Public Works reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
Got a motion, a second. I've got to say that we're lucky to have the marshmallow because with all the cats and dogs and everything else that they take care of, therefore, so I don't know what we'd do if we didn't have them. So we're lucky to have that. This is for a two-year agreement. So, but a motion, a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
Item E is the, John, you want to do a presentation?
Sure. Briefly. Also in your packet is the preliminary engineering report for what we're kind of pointing, the west downtown street utility improvement project scheduled for the summer of 2024. This would be our larger street utility reconstruction project that we've got on the docket for next year. It's been included in the CIP budget, so forth. In short, includes various streets sort of west of Washington Avenue in the city of downtown, including Frazee Street from Washington to Old Grove. So there were several blocks there. One block of Home Street from Washington to Lake. And again, several blocks of Front Street from Washington to Summit Avenue. One block of Lake Avenue between Front and Highway 10, and then also an alleyway. So the general nature of the improvement is a full reconstruction project, you know, building to building or edge of sidewalk to edge of sidewalk. Curb gutter, street utilities. We're replacing all the utilities in some areas. In other areas, we have some new utilities that we think we can leave. But by and large, it is a full reconstruction project. Project cost is, I think, above $4.1 million. We funded per usual with special assessments, sewer water utility funds, and general tax levies. So we're just getting going on the design for this. We'd be setting the resolution you have in front of you as adopting the report, and then setting a public hearing for the council meeting in December, where I'll do a more in-depth presentation.
And one thing too, you mentioned yesterday, John, that the city share on this, we've got a pretty big share of it, up $2,700,000.
That, that's correct, Vice Mayor. And in addition to that, I'd probably point out that there are some city-owned properties adjacent to this. So in addition to that city share, there is assessable share that is going against city properties, like the library, police station. Likewise, the county has a number of properties adjacent to the project as well. So.
It's a project we've been waiting to have done for quite a few years, and I'm glad we're moving forward with it. Turn it back to you, Dan.
Item E is consideration to a resolution accepting the preliminary engineer's report for the 2024 west downtown street utility reconstruction and setting a public hearing for December 12th, 2023. Public Works recommends approval, and I so move.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
Item F is consideration to a resolution supporting a grant application for the local road improvement program for the West Lake, for West Lake Drive Phase 3 project, Legion Road to Washington Avenue. John is standing up here, so may as well hear my as well. John is standing up here, so may as well hear my as well.
This is, I guess I would, I would say fairly routine. It's a supporting resolution. The application would, would actually be coming officially from Becker County. This would be for Westlake Drive Phase Three, which is the beach segment from, from South Washington Avenue to Legion, which right now, we have in our capital improvement plan for '25, maybe '25, maybe '26. But seeking funding to help offset those project costs. We did something similar like this for South Washington Avenue. We also did something similar on Highland Drive, where the township was the applicant, but we did a supporting resolution. So, if we're successful, we could get collectively between the county and the city, another $1.5 million towards those project costs in addition to the, it'd been around $900,000 that we've already obtained a grant to go towards the trail. So.
Public Works reviewed this yesterday, recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. While you're standing up there, John, I'll give us a, accepting the monthly report for project.
Certainly, Vice Mayor and Council. The status reports in your packet. Thankfully, we're basically wrapped up with construction for the year. Just a little recap of where we left things. Campbell Avenue and Linden Lane is substantially complete. Next spring, they will have the final seeding and yard restoration, along with a final lift of pavement on that. Other than that, the project is completed. The same is true for Summit Avenue. Project's done, just another lift of pavement and turf restoration in the spring. There's a little bit sweeping that needs to happen down there, but the contractors can be working on that. Terry Street and Andrew subdivision, we had the assessment hearing tonight on that, that project. They actually got further than they were required to. They got the curb and gutter down and the grading behind the curb done. They didn't get any paving down, just got to hold some next spring when they put a globalist of pavement down and doing the turf restoration on that. The 2023 street rehab, I, I had initially planned to bring a revised report back to the council this evening on that project. You recall, the bids, they were high, rejected them. Now, we're going to add some additional projects to that, and we bid it this winter. I got some, some geotechnical information back that sort of gave me reasonable pause on that for another month to kind of contemplate what we need to do with a couple of those roads. So, I will be bringing that in December, so we can move that project ahead and get a bid in a timely manner this winter. The next two, Willow Springs and Southwood Shore Estates, those are just tied to that larger reconstruction or rehabilitation project. So, likely be rebidding those this winter with that project when we get to that point. Other than that, you heard me talk about the west downtown project already. And then, the final project is we continue to work on the new water tower, the final design for that, looking for, for bidding on that, the final documents sometime late winter or the spring. So.
Questions?
Questions, John?
Item G is consideration to accepting the city engineers' monthly project status report. Public Works recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Before we move on to finance, Sean, I wonder if you could just give us a little update about our snow emergency program that we have. We haven't any snow here yet, but I know we will have some. Also, maybe go with the sidewalk policy, who is responsible for sidewalks?
Yep. Abutting homeowners or businesses are responsible for their sidewalks that are abutting their property, and businesses have 24 hours to remove it, residents have 72 hours. Snow emergencies can be declared anytime there is two inches or more accumulated snow is forecasted, or else blowing snow, anything that could cause safety issues for the traveling public.
Okay, thank you for that update. We'll move on to finance then. Dan?
Me again? All right. I take a stab at this, Heidi. On these first two resolutions, they're basically technicalities in language and what will be approved last month, so they're basically the same thing that we approved last month, but some technicalities require us to approve these differently. So, item A is consideration to a resolution accepting the offer of Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase the general obligation sewer revenue note, series 2023B, in the original aggregate principal amount of $2,414,220, providing for issuance and authorizing execution of a bond purchase and project loan agreement. Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
Second. Any, any discussion on this at all? Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item B is consideration to a resolution accepting the offer of the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to purchase the general obligation water revenue note, series 2023C, in the original aggregate principal amount of $1,264,802, providing for issuance and authorizing the execution of a bond purchase and project loan agreement. Finance Committee recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item C, Kelsey, you want to take a swing at the agreement here?
Yep. Vice Mayor and Council, annually, the city council approves the rates that are set at the American Legion campground. In your packet, there is a letter from the campground manager with their recommendation. Their recommendation for 2024 is to keep the seasonal rates the same. Smaller lots are at $2,900 and the larger lots are at at least $250. Reason being, they were increased by $100 here in 2023, and more importantly, basically the seasonal campers are going to lose cable TV access. In the past, cable TV has been provided to the campers at no additional cost. Basically, the way that cable TV is now delivered, the old coax method just isn't available anymore. So, that actually nets the campground savings of somewhere around $23,000. So, you know, you spread that out over all those seasonal campers, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of savings of $150 per unit. So, since they're losing that amenity, their recommendation is to keep the seasonal rates the same. And then, on the transient or the daily rates, their recommendation is to increase that by $2 per site. So, for the water electric sites will go from $50 to $52 per day, and the full hookup sites will go from $55 to $57 per day.
So, consideration to approving the American Legion campground rates for 2024. Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that?
Uh, here's my editorial. I think this is the best deal in town. I think that for their proximity, close to everything, close on the beach, and I only assume that all the golf carts on the beach come from them, I can only assume the boats parking on the beach by them or from them. I think this is one of the best deals in town. I think that we need to look at raising these rates considerably next year.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Item D, Kelsey, you want to take a, correct this one too?
Vice Mayor and Council, in your packet is a memo from me explaining a little bit about the Mahavi playground that used to be located behind the museum. In early stages, basically, the city had agreed to participate in relocating that playground. The location has changed a little bit during the, the project duration, but ultimately it's landed to be in that northwest corner. If you look at the memo, you can see it at the corner of Front Street in Oak Grove. Mahavi has provided the equipment. They also have obtained a grant of $22,500 to go towards the installation of the playground area. And then, the city anticipation that this playground was going to be needed, we've had kind of a placeholder for some of our ARPA dollars that we received, our federal COVID dollars a few years ago. So, at this point, the recommendation would be for the city council to release up to $15,000 to go towards that project, to get it completed. And that would basically probably take place at this point next spring, and that should bring the project to conclusion.
Okay, thank you. We're lucky we've got those ARPA dollars.
So, item seven D is consideration to amendment from the city administrator releasing the funds for the Mahavi playground. Finance Committee recommends approval, and I so move. Second.
Motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Let's move on to public safety and turn it over to Wendy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I understand item A has been reviewed, those have been resolved, and so we can move on to item B, update regarding the fire department standing operating guidelines. And Chief Hanson is here to kind of review with the whole council some information being shared with us by Public Safety Committee, and that they'll be bringing to the centers.
Yeah, Vice, Vice Mayor and Council. So, the last time you guys seen, currently, the fire department is governed by a constitution and bylaws. And so, what we're moving, in the process of doing, is moving to a SOP, SOP handbook. It's a process that was started before I got here, and I'm just kind of taking the ball into the end zone here. We're just about finished with it, just kind of wanted to give an update to you guys and council, or Public Safety Committee and council. So, you guys will see this next month and potentially adopt.
Okay. Here, anything else you want to do with that at all right now, Wendy?
Not that I can think of.
And there's going to be a meeting in December at all?
Pardon?
That we have a meeting in December with the new deadlines, is that correct?
They'll be presenting those as.
That's correct.
And looking for council action. Overall, Chief Hanson had just kind of provided that, for the most part, there are no significant changes from what exists to the standing operating guidelines, but that they will be a different governance, so to speak, so that they would be following after the law of the city council versus the dependent.
Correct. Okay, and, and like you said, the last time this has changed was 2013, so it's over 10 years old now, so.
Good time for you.
Yeah, so it's just good for discussion. And while you're at it, why don't you give the council an update, how we're coming with volunteer firemen?
Yeah, so, we are testing another person tomorrow. I don't have any reason to believe that they won't pass the marks. We'll bring on one more person, and then we will have three people in our certification class starting at the end of the month. Thank you for that. That brings us to 28 total.
Excellent. Do you have anything else in terms of?
I, I can.
Okay, thank you. Well, that will move on to the electric and handling.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. We got, 412 project has come to us to see if we'd be interested in sponsoring some money on the Christmas lights around town. We haven't done this in the past. We have done stuff for the polar vest. We have $1,500 left available in the liquor store fund, and we unanimously agreed on $500 for this project. Kelsey, you want to elaborate on it, just?
I like it.
Okay. I still move.
Is there a second? Okay. I, I'd like to say too that this lighting project where we started lighting the trees has been a huge success, so I'm glad we're going forward with it. So, we've got a motion, a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. May I have one other item then?
Uh, just the liquor.
Yes, okay. Want to do that one now then?
It's a temporary. Temporary. Liquor license for the American Legion.
Okay, do we have to approve that at all?
Yeah, we should make a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion.
I still move.
Also, move with a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item we go to is public utilities, and I'm going to call on Vernell tonight to give us a report on these rate increases and kind of explain to new council members how this works out for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Yeah, there's a memo outlining the rate increases, proposed rate increases for the electric and water in the packet, along with the rates and some comparison charts, but you'll indulge me for a few minutes. I'd like to talk about how the rate-making process goes in Detroit Lakes and how we do that, especially for some of the new council members that have not been through this process before. Per the charter, the Public Utilities Commission shall fix the rates and determine the rates and charges to be charged for the services that we provide. And then, we collect the earnings and revenues for the utility. However, before we do that, the first, the commission shall first cause discussion of charges or alteration to be submitted to city council for approval, and that's verbatim right under the charter. So, the Public Utilities Commission has responsibility to determine what the rate should be. We need to bring them to you for approval, and then we collect those revenues, and then before the rates go into effect, we have to publish that in a local newspaper 10 days before the rates go into effect. So, once they're pending approval tonight, approximately that first week of December, we will publish the rates in the newspaper and explain what those rates are, and show them just as we've shown in the packet. And then, we publish the paper, and that'll be due notice for that. So, in the rate-making process, doing the rates is kind of a, is a, I'll be honest, it's a complicated process. So, we engage outside services to help us set those rates. That's been Missouri River Energy Services, we vote for electric and water. Missouri River conducted rate studies for us last year for both entities, and the funds stand alone, they're individual business units, so we do not co-mingle funds between the electric and water, water and sewer, sewer and electric, back and forth. They're each individual business units that have to stand on their own. So, we take a look at all the costs, that's on-AM costs, operational maintenance costs for electric, there's wholesale power costs, purchase power costs, transmission, distribution costs, admin and general costs, overhead maintenance, underground maintenance, meter meeting, utility billing and collections, the transfer, unallocated expenses, non-utility expense, all the things we track in the utility electric fund goes into cost of service and rate study. They then determine how much of those costs should be allocated to the residential customer, how much to the commercial customers, and to the industrial customers. And for the industrial customers, that's split out between demand and energy. A big chunk of that is wholesale power, transmission, substation costs and distribution costs. And for the residential, they get a smaller proportion of purchase power, transmission, distribution, and so on. So, we take all those costs, they put it in the magic blender and spit out the number to make sure we get cost recovery. I can tell you, Missouri River is very, very good at it. I've been using Missouri River for electric rate studies for 23 years, and I've been using them for water studies for about 20 years. They're very thorough, they're objective. So, they help us navigate through our cost of service and then help us establish the rates. And on the sewer fund, when we went into doing the new wastewater treatment plan, that was a pretty big animal because it was a totally different process than we've been doing in the past. So, we utilized the SGH, Short Elliot Hendrickson. They helped us establish the initial rates for the sewer fund. They have been stable since 2018 or 2019. We are going to review those rates in 2024, but we're going to use Missouri River Energy Services to review those rates and determine where we need to be 25 forward-looking for the sewer fund rates. So, that's kind of how the, the rate-making process goes. Now, the utility commission's been very comfortable with the information Missouri River provides. When updates happen, like Missouri River reset rate increase effective January 1, 2024, we call them up, they plug that into the model, they tell us when we need to do our rates to make sure we get cost recovery on the purchase power increase. They'll do the same thing next year for Sipapa has an increase. If anything changes in our capital plan, we submit that to them and they make those changes. When we updated the capital improvement plan that was approved in September, we took those updated costs for 2027, plugged that into the rate model for the water fund, and generated a published rate for 2024 going forward. So, it's a living, breathing document. They, they all live, we use them a lot, I refer to them a lot. We're very accurate in our record keeping, Haida's very good job of tracking our expenses and our revenues. We plug those into the models and spits out a pretty accurate rate for what we should be charging all our customers and all each one of our funds. Any questions on how the rates are, we go about them, magic mixture, creating rates? Then I'll just get into a little bit about what we're proposing for 2024. I'll talk about the water rate increase first. When we took a look at the water rates for 2023, we did a 6% increase for 2023. We took a look at the required increase for 2024, and I said we took a look at the 2027 capital improvement plan, estimated capital cost for water fund, and that added a little bit of need to generate some more revenue for 2024 going forward. So, 2024 proposing 12% increase on the water rate. Now, to put that in perspective, 1% on the water rate only generates $13,000 in revenue. So, just don't have a lot of water units that are going out there to get sold, so 1% doesn't generate a lot of revenue. 50% or 6% of that 12% is being allocated to the replacement costs for reconstruct projects. Remember, we were going to take those assessment costs on reconstruct projects, take them out of the assessments, put them in rate base. That's reconstruct projects only, not new construction, reconstruct projects only. So, 6% of that 12% is due to capital needs going forward for replacement of reconstruct projects. The 12% will equate on an average residential bill to about $2.75 a month increase. So, an average resident uses 3,140 gallons a month. So, they're going to see $2.75 increase for 3,140 gallons. $2.75 to buy about 32 ounces of water, water at the grocery store. So, it's a pretty good value for providing for the $2.75 a month. We will also take a look at this again in '25. Right now, we're anticipating an approximately 12% increase for '25 and '26 as well. Right now, we're anticipating an approximately 12% increase for '25 and '26 as well. We got to find some way to fund John's $8.35 million water tower. No, that's something that the community really needs. We need that additional capacity, we need a little bit additional pressure. We've been kind of putting this off the last couple of years to get E2Q done, and the timing is right is to make the move and get that tower going, start construction on that and the way I've had it in service sometime in late '25 or early '26. Any questions on the water side?
Did I hear you clearly, that so there's 12% increase in 2024, 6% of, or half of it is for capital improvements to existing water?
Correct, so like.
So they no longer will assess those to individual homeowners or business owners?
On reconstruct, right, that is correct.
Because we're generating that money.
That's correct. So I'll just follow, that's a good question, but I'll just follow up on that a little bit more. If you take a look at a typical 100-foot lot, 100-foot water mean is probably $5,500 to $6,500 in that range would be assessed, maybe a little bit more now. So if you take a look at that breakdown over 10 years, that's $550 to $650 a year. I did the math on this, I think, a year going into the rate, $33 a year. So instead of paying $550 a year on assessment, you pay $33 a year more in water going. How that goes because there's some socialization costs that would all help paying that grade, but it does significantly reduce the impact of property owners on reconstruct projects. Now, that being said, the more we can grow, the more we can expand our water and sewer systems, the better off we will be, because we'll have more customers spread those costs out to help us keep those rates lower. So growth is still a part of a factor here, we're still looking, needing to grow to make sure we can keep these costs manageable going forward.
Burnell, I've got a question for you. If the rate for water is $2.75 a month for resident, on the 5% for electricity rates, what does that amount to?
I'll get into that. So, an average residential customer with a 5% rate increase will see $3.80 a month. An average residential customer uses about 800 kilowatt hours a month. If you use more than that, you're going to see a little bit more than that $3.80. You use less than that, it's going to be less than that. An average residential customer sees $3.80 a month. Commercial customers vary because of the demand charges, what their load factor is, there's just a whole lot of different variables in commercial accounts to determine what that rate increase is actually how it will affect. In the packet, we did show some comparison charts, and Gary, you want to bring a couple of them up here? Just go to the first one. Yeah, page 209, so you got to put page 209.
You go?
So that's our residential comparison of monthly residential electric bills for an average residential customer. You see the red bars are Detroit Lakes current, about $98, and you'll see where the Detroit Lakes 2024 is a dark blue bar, and then you see where Lake Region, Co-op, Minnesota Power, Excel Energy, and Rod Rice Electric fall into line with this, and there are neighboring utilities that would be in competition with the customers and be competitive with the rates. Now, we are comparing to 2022 rates, so even though we're going up at 2024, some of these are 22 and some of them are 23 rates. I know Alexandria's looking at 5% increase, Worthington's looking at somewhere in that 5% increase, Excel Energy's looking at 12% increase, Minnesota Power's looking at 10% increase, Artil Power's looking at 10% increase, and just for reference on the gas side, Minnesota Energy Resources has a 10% request in front of the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission for a 10% increase in gas. So we're pretty comparative on our electric rate for average residential bills. Questions on the electric side? There are other charts in there to show our comparison on water. Gary, let's just go to average residential water. So there's the average residential customer at 4.2 units of water, 3,140 gallons. You can see on the far left side of the graph, we're third from the lowest with 2023 rates. We'll still be below the median after our 2024 proposed rate increase, so we're still 11% below the median after our rate increase. So we've been very low on our water rates, I'll be honest with you, probably been a little bit artificially low on our water rates for the last few years, but we are starting to get our fund balance built up, we are heading in the right direction, and I think this, these rate increases all over 12% seems high, if $2.75 a month, it should be manageable for most people to be able to navigate and handle. Other questions on the rate process that propose? So, just a quick summary, proposing 12% on average increase on water, 5% increase on electric. Individual rates by classes are in your packet. I won't go over them individually, entertain any questions. You may have a rate making process.
I want to make the comment that the good thing about having taxpayer-owned for our utilities, both water and electricity, is that our rates, as you can see here, are very, very reasonable, and it also, at the end of the year, it gives us money to help other city projects, and if we had an Artil Power company or somebody else, we wouldn't have that. So we're lucky to have a very good, a very good operation, well-run here, so we're very fortunate.
I appreciate that, Mr. Vice Mayor. I could get on to benefits of public power another two and a half or three hours, but I won't go over that tonight. But staff recommends, and the city, or the Utilities Commission approved these rates this morning, the commission recommends approval, and staff recommends.
Okay, I'll call on Matt Hopey for those rate increases individually.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Item 10A, consideration resolution approving the 2024 electric rates as presented, and I so move.
Motion to second, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries.
Item 10A2, consideration resolution approving the 2024 water rates as, water rates as presented, and I so move.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries. Okay, let's go on to item lemonade, I'm going to call on Jackie for that, and maybe you want to go over that a little bit, Kelsey, about the polling locations for 2024?
Yep, Vice Mayor and Council, annually, we have to set our polling locations, so for next year, it'll be the three Lutheran churches again, so the same polling places we've had in the past.
Vice Mayor, in the matter of designation of our polling locations in the city, I want to approve.
There's a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries. Before we go on to the mayor's agenda, I just want to say a word to make of a special thank you to the girls volleyball team who represented Detroit Lakes at the state volleyball tournament, but they came home with a fourth place trophy, the entire team from the girls to the student managers, to the coaches, they did a great job for us this year, and we're proud for all the work they've done for us, and we'll just say, keep her going, and we'll get down there again next year. So let's go on to the mayor's agenda here. Item A, we haven't found anyone yet to be appointed to the Minnesota Fire Gymnastics Board, that can be anybody from the public, but also can be somebody from the city council, so if you know somebody who'd like to do that, please do so. And I'd like to mention to the people out there in TV land, that, you know, we have positions for volunteers all the time here in the city Detroit Lakes, and if you have an interest in a specific committee, please stop in at the office and let us know that you'd like to be on this committee or that committee, because we always need good volunteers, and we just want you to come in and let us know that your thoughts are on that. Okay, let's go on to item B, the mayor has a consideration to appoint Justin Koenig to the planning commission. Mr. Koenig has failed to term of Kyle Fordy, which expired in December of 2023, and is eligible to be appointed to the first term, and there are motions to approve his name. Motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries. Item C, we're trying, haven't got a decision yet from Mr. Swenson, the mayor will be following through with him. Let's go to item D, consideration to appoint Nancy Hyger to the planning commission, whose term expires December 31, 2023. Ms. Hyger has completed her first term, is eligible to be appointed for her second term. Is there a motion? Motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries. Carries then. Item G is a consideration to appoint Eric Lumbergh to the planning commission, whose term expires December 31, 2023. Ms. Lumbergh has completed his second term, is eligible to be appointed for her third term. Is there a motion for him to be? There's a motion? And we've got a second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries. Item F is consideration to appoint John Flin to Detroit Lakes technical board. Christopher Flins has failed the term of Aaron Caden's position that expired December 31, 2023, and is eligible to be appointed for his first term. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Or is it somebody like to make a decision? Is that motion? We got a motion. We got, got ahead myself, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Okay, there we have it. Item G, consideration to appointment of Rod Bealston to the sports arena commission. Mr. Bealston has fulfilled the terms of Ryan Tang, which expired December 31, 2023, and is eligible to be appointed, is there a motion? Motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries. Let's go on to item H, consideration to appoint Chad Garble to the sports arena commission, the term of December 31, 2023. Mr. Weber has completed his second term, is eligible to be appointed for our third term, is there a motion? Motion to second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose that motion, carries. Let's go on here now, I've got, I want to mention that we have some things coming up here. We've got a ribbon cutting here tomorrow for the food pantries at 1:00 at the Food Pantry Site. They're expecting a big turnout, and everybody's invited to come down, if you can make that, I certainly appreciate that, and they would too. Also, reminder that the Canadian Pacific Railroad will once again be coming here December 14 at 2:30, so people are asking about that, so please mark your calendar, and then check the meeting dates for all of 2024 for councilists, and I'll link out those meetings that are coming up. And then, going forward here, staff, Kelsey, you have anything at all?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, Aaron?
No, good, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Wendy?
I don't have anything additional, but I did get a chance to thank you for that very complete and comprehensive and clear answers to the water rates and electrical rates. Very appreciated. Thank you. Brad?
Just thank you to Public Works and Parks Department, I know it's a lot of work, closing up summer shop and getting ready for winter, so let the guys know it's appreciated and buckle up.
Okay, Sean? Okay. Here and then, those motions, the private motion, go ahead and adjourn this meeting, thank you.